For what I paid for the town, you would have spent as much as the ones on.
I can't keep anything straight. I can't keep my middle name.
I can't do that.
You guys are redheads.
You all feel like you're.
Yeah.
I just assumed I was sitting here. Do you have a phone problem? We have a big one in there. Can we borrow?
Yeah.
We both have.
I brought these over because.
Yeah, I got, yeah, yeah. I think it's in the rec. I thought so.
I thought so.
I don't know if I can get it. I just packed that room because it's Christmas presents for the kids. About the week to try. I did have that.
Yeah. My god. The one with popcorn, whatever you get, I forget it.
I know where the popcorn machine is. I'm not. I also look for the hot dog.
I don't know.
I think the hot dog machine is covered.
Perhaps it's justified.
Oh, wow.
No.
I don't know.
That's awful.
Yeah, it is.
I get irritated.
Probably got soaked and possibly got given away. Who knows?
Yeah, when we did the hot dog, we just did them on the stove.
Heat's on, not air.
Have a seat. Um, I don't think any of them would take them in some of these stores, so hope yourself.
Where are they? Where are they? They're after you. Good. I am freezing. You're too skinny.
That's the problem.
Did you know the back door?
That door was open, just so you know.
Oh, but it was open, but it's always locked. It's open?
It was like a jar. I was like, I can. I could see that it was open. I was like, oh, mommy must have came up the ramp. That's what I thought.
Oh, this door back here?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. I will say, I came in here and I saw Michael's truck here the other day, so I stopped there and then I opened this door and I was like, this building is creepy as hell. And I'm like.
Sixty-eight hours of hunger from Wolfboro come last week and they were looking for a donation. Yeah, and I had stated that I would reach out to the school board on Wednesday. At the school board and I reached out to Wednesday night, but I guess there was no discussion. So I guess there's no interest in the school board funding anything they want to come out of town budget. And we only have a two percent tax impact.
Uh, no, the school hasn't finished or put their budget together yet.
Oh, I was told that.
So I did get, I did get a sixty-eight hours of hunger pamphlet today with a sticky note on it. I'm not sure who that came from, but asking for it to go through the school.
Okay, so.
I'm assuming it was another board member, select board member.
Well, it would have been, I would have given it to Carol and saying, I don't know.
But, but yeah, it's something that I asked them to look into.
Okay, so we'll, I guess we can consider it for a little, it's out there, potentially could end up on here. I mean, I just don't know where the money's coming from because we're already over, gonna be over. We're looking for money, but so they could be, potentially maybe we'll be looking to add.
So all these organizations have reached out and requested and we did fund them this year. I know in past years, some years, they never even reached out to us.
Yes, because we would, right, if we issued a check, this is a request for the money.
So they have indeed done.
Yeah, because we paid, the actual is paid out of school tax.
Just double checking.
No, I, yeah.
Past years, it's not been extended.
Right, and I think we've explained to those places that if you don't request it, you're not gonna get it. Even if we haven't, haven't budgeted in line either. So right now that area is remaining seven and six.
In my opinion, whether the school funds it or the town side funds it, I think it's an important organization to be funded.
And I don't disagree, I just, we're just at a hard, we're having a hard time.
I, I think.
Budget number than, you know, the tax.
I think we'll be able to put it under the school. I know that they were kinda hesitant about it, just because there's no other donation lines under the school budget. So they don't want it to become a norm, but given the current circumstances with the tax gap and budgeting and inflation and everything else, I think it's the only way we're gonna be able to support that organization, so.
And I mean, and I wouldn't say that it'd be any more than like a thousand what we do on the other line, so.
No.
Alright, so that's that line. So we will move to planning board. This is on page. Page two, bottom two. So Janet.
There's an extra one. I, there's one right next to Kathy and then she had that.
Your budget, yeah, block two, top three. So your total budget this year was thousand seven twenty-six. You're looking to increase that to thirteen five twenty-six. And it looks like that's, uh, strapped regional planning is.
The state regional planning, all of that is put into that is some per distribution. When they put around last week.
One minute, are we off set? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Here was, um, the part about being able to help us with certain things. Some of it being free, some of it costing us. I quite frankly, don't have any idea why, you know, they would charge us. So my first thought was just to increase that one by five dollars.
Okay, so this is, so it's not only to just pay dues, it's also if we utilize that for regional planning, they will, they could potentially charge us for something that's above and beyond that's not covered by the dues.
Right.
And that's what's included in that one.
Right.
Alright.
I mean, I wouldn't even begin to, I wouldn't begin with that. I just figured in a couple of parts for some things.
Did you say you only wanted to increase it by a thousand dollars though?
No.
No. She wanted to increase to two five thousand.
Two five thousand.
Workshops. So the workshops, it looks like.
Workshops, you're gonna increase it to four fifty, because I think we've already hit our limit pretty hard. John has attended a few, um.
Oh, so it's not reflected here, because what we have is only ninety, so you're, alright.
Our four, one to our head.
No, actual spent this year.
Oh, actually spent, alright. I mean, the one that, that we were going to, just cost a hundred and twenty-five dollars and I think that might wipe us out.
He hasn't turned it received in yet.
Which is kinda what I gathered, you know. And then, um, legal.
Well, I originally wanted to increase that ten thousand, but I know a two percent. And to you, Robert, we decided to go to seventy-five hundred on that. Because we're, um, we're, oh, we have thirty-four hundred dollars left in the budget right now. I checked that with Carol.
Yep.
But if we continue to update the ordinances and we have to submit them to legal, that's gonna cost us some money.
Right, so, so as comment, this has, he says, uh, the actual is twenty-six, yes. So we just submitted some additional paperwork to legal for ordinance review that John had just sent over. So yes, this is not, I know that this one is gonna be free.
And Janet, you have a couple of sizable bills in a mailbox that aren't reflected here.
Oh, I know there was one for three hundred and eight dollars.
Yeah.
Payman on the bill.
I, I just wanted to point out, it says, it shows that we didn't have spent it all, but I know that there's gonna be an outstanding bill that's going through now with that. Solar ordinance. Any, anybody have any questions for anymore? Yes, we did. So she had said that, uh, John had submitted all of his workshops and so that he's probably, he was probably after three hundred. Sorry.
Submitted one hundred and twenty-five dollars, is that right?
Any, any other questions?
Question on ordinance, how much, I mean, do you think there'd be many ordinance, or ordinance?
Just, just three of them now down the beach and two of them have gone to the attorneys. And it's cost us over twenty-five hundred dollars at this point, just for those two. Now the solar one is sitting with them. John just.
No, that'll be just this year.
But then when we start the beginning of the year and stack it in one over the ordinances, which we have to help with, it was only one that had that much. So we're gonna have to take that on and put it in the planning board. Then there's gonna be ordinances that are gonna have to be submitted to legal. Before we can put them to the ballot.
The solar one will be encumbered instead of.
Out of this money that's in now, yeah.
Correct, yes. Any other questions? Any questions for us, Janet? Okay, very good. Um, so the next item here, it says code enforcement, was Carl coming in? Do you know, do you know?
Thought he was.
Somebody had talked to him about this, I believe it was Scott. And he had some changes because at the time that I did the budget for cheeks, he hadn't turned anything in. So I just carried forward from last year, I believe. And then maybe like two percent on the salary, I can't remember. But, uh, but then he had talked to Scott, said he was gonna make some changes. I haven't gotten anything.
Oh, you're still, where they are.
We are.
Um, so was, do you know, was Christine Bartlett coming in?
No.
Alright, so we can talk about wealth in that. So that's next to the last page. Um, forty-four, forty-four. So this budget right now currently is ten thousand one forty-two, looks like it's gonna decrease to ten thousand sixty. And that's due to, um, flattening, uh, the cell phone stipend. And the wealthiest supplies, which has just been pushed over into the regular dental supplies line.
So we've noticed, had any welfare expenses this year?
No, we, I know that the only, um, okay, the only outstanding group was like a hundred and fifty dollars towards, um, electrical bills. And we'd never gotten the bill from another source for it. So we haven't had to pay, uh, an expense, it was like January or February. So I don't know why we never got billed.
And the welfare drop for salary is a monthly stipend?
Yes. I'm sorry, no, there is no monthly stipend anymore, she gets paid by week rather than everybody else.
Oh, right.
But yeah, it's just a stipend.
Whatever hour does she twenty-four seven or?
Yes, yes, yes. See, call at two o'clock in the morning, she should be in the house.
Yeah, no, that's two one one. That's what they need to call.
What is the stipend, I mean, obviously. Forty-three ninety-two divided by twenty, um, fifty-two?
Divided by twelve.
No.
Divided by twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-six.
I was just saying, if you wanted a month of that one, why would we have divided by twenty-six?
Now, what is the change in the, in the cell phone?
It's because, uh, before she was, she had just like a foot phone, you know. She had a cheaper phone than, also everybody was asking at the time.
But it's a town issued phone.
Yes.
Now.
No bill.
We pay the monthly bill? Okay.
Yes.
So, so that number's.
I mean, it's every two weeks. It's five, five weekly, yeah, sorry. Any more questions? We got a welfare? Um, so will you, let's, let's go to the first page. And we'll start with the first, we'll go through this, give it till maybe Carl comes in at five forty-five. Um, so we have, we have some time to go through this. So the first section, the executive section, forty-one thirty. Current budget is one forty-three, three twenty-five. Department head is one fifty-six, four fourteen. Those increases are due to the copier, which I think that's a contract and we had others. First, first page.
What are you looking at, your first page?
Right here.
Executive.
I'm looking at the total overall section, sorry. So the total overall section for the executive is one forty-three, three twenty-five. Current budget, proposed, uh, well, the budget head is one fifty-six, four fourteen. That's a nine percent overall, I think the increase that's driving that is the copier, which I believe was under budgeted last year in this contract. And the other two is, um, the admin assistant and the admin clerk. Cause the admin clerk, those hours were increased and the admin assistant paid change with the, uh, the, the.
So the admin clerk is strictly increased hours?
Yeah, she, she didn't get any increase because she's been doing it year to year, but, uh, like what, two months ago, I think?
Yeah.
We voted to, the board voted to increase the hours to twenty-four instead of twenty.
So, yeah, so just as a step back, I'm. The change percentage line, anything that's blue is above two percent. So it's the pop-up, just, that's all.
Yeah, I have a question though. On your tax impact, where did you use for the equal, I mean, assessed value? Is it, what do you know, use without?
It's the net.
It's the net one, yeah. So do you know what that number is off the top of your head?
Yeah, it's, um.
Three million.
Three hundred.
It's three.
Three oh eight, three oh eight.
You can, it's.
I can guess, I feel.
I was just wondering.
It's, I have it, if you give me a minute, I'll.
It's just about double what we are.
Yeah.
And that's the net assess?
Yeah.
I think it's off by like two grand.
Even though it went up though, we still have to add that to this.
Yeah, yes, yeah, it's, you know, one side goes the other. So any other questions regarding the executive section?
Um, how much was the admin assistant, like what are they at right now, what are they getting an hour?
Admin assistant, she's, um, right now she's getting twenty-five and then after ninety days, she's supposed to go up to twenty-six.
No, twenty was twenty-four, twenty-five.
Oh, okay, then that line is wrong. I thought it was like, wait, it's up to forty-six.
Yep.
Oh, S four, that's right. So, so we gotta fix that number.
Yeah. We're getting the admin assistant second line down, so that's.
So it should be at fifty-two thousand, fifty-two thousand.
Thank you.
Is it forty hours?
Yeah.
Fifty-two even?
So that's gonna change the bottom line a little bit, five, two thousand maybe.
And that's at twenty-five dollars now.
That's what the budget is, yes. Anything else?
Is that salary or hourly? It's flattened, sorry.
Hourly.
Is there an overtime line or, or if you know overtime tomorrow, what? Do you know how that works?
Okay, it's, the intent is not to have any, but.
Shift flex.
Yes.
And the copier?
That was under, that was under stated last year in the contract, so that amount is the actual contract amount.
Would you consider the contract, this is this year?
So it's going up five hundred?
Yeah, so basically with the, with the copier, hold on, I have it, um, so if, the actual copier is ninety-nine and then we got three laser printers, two for town bus and one for the cooking office. And all the toner and everything is included in that, so it actually costs less than the toner per year. And that's, that's what the increase is.
What are, I don't know, uh, so she should use?
We only paid, we only spent two hundred and eighteen, what are you doing two thousand and one? Is there a, like? Newham, community officials, bill hasn't come in yet.
Okay.
Um, but it's about around eighteen hundred.
Yep.
Is that major memory?
Yeah.
What was the advertising for, with budget point three?
For where, what line?
Uh.
Forty-one thirty-four.
Oh, advertising. I think that those line, that line is in there probably for when, if we have to put something in the paper.
Properties, things like that.
Like if someone does a special meeting or?
Yeah.
Is there nothing or any of that anymore?
Uh, I don't know, I would keep that in there because it's.
It's been reduced to a dollar.
Cause I, it was like, you guys had said you didn't intend to sell any municipal property, you didn't, like you have no, nothing that you would put in the newspaper.
But we would keep it open, we'd keep it open, it's the future, we want to, but, yeah.
I'm trying to apply it down to the dollar.
Oh, right, I'm gonna keep it at a dollar, cause we keep that line open.
Carol, again on the copier, how many, that's the main printer and then how many?
So there's three, the three laser printers, the contract's a hundred and twenty-nine a month. And then the total copier is ninety-nine. So it's two twenty-nine total a month.
Thank you.
Any other questions for this section?
Yeah, office supplies. That's another one that went down to the, um, dollar.
Because that's in a, that's moving to a different.
Where do you see that? What line are you looking at?
Office equipment repairs, you mean?
Yeah.
We have no office.
Okay.
All of our office equipment is under contract, whether it be the copier, the computer, the price did meter, like. I couldn't think of anything that you'd use that for.
And the website, is that? I'm trying to remember back, what the conversation was on the website.
The website is a three-year contract.
And then it's, no.
And then it's, we pay once every three years.
Right.
When does that contract expire?
Say that again?
When does that contract expire?
Two years.
Two years from now?
So I thought we paid last year.
We did, we did.
We weren't supposed to pay this year.
We did, we did. I had originally made that one a dollar.
I, I have a question to say. I just like to study, get any, kinda like, okay, anyway, but, so I, I have a question to say for that, but I mean, we can certainly.
Yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna pay anything, I think we should.
My only concern is, I guess, what I would recommend potentially is whatever it's going to be annually going forward. Maybe that's what we put in there because we take it away, we're gonna lose it.
It's on the line, but we can't carry it over.
Right.
So if we budget, if it's through whatever.
I'm just trying to, I'm, right, I'm trying to.
If you experience these years, if you're not gonna pay a bill, we shouldn't have put a bill in there, that's just my opinion, but, um.
You gotta go to the school board and say that.
Hey, we're not a school board.
Nope, I'm just saying.
So I just wanna try to understand, so last year we paid.
Yeah, we paid the three-year contract.
This year and next year, we don't have to pay.
Correct.
Twenty-four, we don't pay yet until twenty-seven, right? Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Be twenty-six.
We paid twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, oh, yeah, twenty-six.
So no pay again till twenty-six.
Yes, that one can be reduced. Um, so it would be reduced, technically we would reduce it to a dollar, just so we can't, so we can't get rid of the line. If we so choose to do that.
Four grand, four grand.
Yeah. No, it is. So.
I have one more question.
Oh, yeah, no, that's alright.
I know it's only eighty-one dollars, but you guys sent town reports, three eighty-one, twenty-nine, we only passed four hundred. Yeah, that, that again, it's just like inside of, well. We made way too many last year and we have extra supplies in the closet, so we shouldn't be.
No, that works.
We made way too many last year.
If we didn't, you wouldn't have made enough.
I know, I know. But I think I had like a hundred left over, you know, and that's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And plus I have enough in the closet for another hundred.
The computer support, is that a locked in figure?
That's, I don't remember when you said it's due to be up, but it's not up yet here, so it's gonna be the same.
So will they increase a certain percentage?
Yes.
Wait a minute, that's, computer support.
Well, thirty-one to sixty.
No, it didn't go up.
No, I'm guessing we haven't paid.
It didn't go up, it didn't go contract and this is not a contract for nearly a year, so it stays the exact same.
Do we pay this monthly?
We pay it monthly.
Okay, that's fine.
Third part, so.
Yeah.
It's not manual.
Right. So we good with this section now?
I didn't know you were coming, I'm sorry.
It's okay, we can talk about that. Uh, we will go to code enforcement.
Please step up to the microphone, sir.
Uh, yeah, yeah, no. It's like fourteen, I think, fifteen.
So we don't have one of these things, I think.
I don't, I don't have any.
So, so we're on the fifth page, I think?
Page two.
Forty-two forty, section forty-two forty, so fifth page. So currently, the code enforcement overall budget is eleven six seventy-three. We did not receive anything, so we kept the budget flat. Are you recommending any changes to that, Carl, tonight?
Uh, the only thing I would recommend is the electrical inspection salary.
Yeah.
That's currently right now, um, at the salary that we're at, that it once peered for tires. And isn't able to do this, we're in trouble to get an inspector in, they're usually like seventy-five bucks an hour. I don't think we should triple it yet, we should at least try to get it up a little bit more.
So what is your recommendation?
Um, so at, he does roughly two to three inspections every two weeks. So I'm thinking fifty dollars per hour start on that, like have our fifty dollars at least on there. So that comes out to twenty-six hundred per year.
Total or increase?
Total.
Total.
And right now it's at thirteen, so double it.
It's at thirteen thirty-six right now.
Right, so you, you wanna increase it to twenty-six hundred.
Right, yeah, that's almost up.
Yeah, no, alright.
And that would just get us closer to being able to pay an inspector for the electrical portion if that happens. Does it, a lot, there's not a lot of inspectors who do what Peter can do.
I don't know anybody that's gonna come and do what Peter's doing. For fifty bucks an hour, never mind twenty-five.
So it's good to, to get some money going up so that we can be prepared for, than it's gonna be a few thousand.
Has he indicated he's gonna retire?
No, um, I know.
No, I'm just asking.
Just, uh, you know, you never know, anything will happen.
Yep, no, alright.
I will say that we've come, like this last paper, him and I had to do the math and he was very close to minimum wage on his last paycheck. He was close to making seventy-five dollars.
He helps the town.
During the summer, it's worse than in the winter, but, um, he might have, you know, three, four inspections that he's typically.
Is this just a stipend then?
Yes, but, but the law, you know, the law.
No, 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 right, no, I know the law, but I'm just, that's why I'm, cause I'm looking like.
So what is this stipend?
It's thirteen thirty.
Thirteen thirty-six, a year.
I mean, here's our, yeah, and we pay him bi-weekly.
It's like fifty-two dollars.
Fifty-one, it's on fifty-one, fifty-one thirty-six every year.
Any other increases other than that?
I don't, I don't see any.
The only other thing I would know is, did you get anything about your software? Because all the other software is around eight percent, but I didn't get anything from the code enforcement side, I need to, from avatar. So I carried that across, but I think we should add something to it, because all the other avatar software went up five to eight percent.
Can we, can we reach out to them and find out? What that amount has to be?
I'll, I'll follow them.
What's the hell about, can we go back to the local salaries stipend?
Yeah, sorry.
So if we do agree to increase that to twenty-six hundred, are we going to up Peter's stipend to twenty-six hundred?
That's what it sounds like what would happen.
Oh, I think that's only.
No, no, right, right, but we're not making that decision tonight, but that's, that would be, no, but that would be. Right, that would be the, um, norm, right? If he's typically stipend, whatever we change that line to be, then that's gonna reduce his salary.
So with those, that's like what I was saying, said, anybody that's the code enforcement, welfare, Peter, anybody that gets a stipend when town meeting hap, you know, when the budget, when you guys, whatever, January first, I just divide it by twenty-six and that's what they get.
That is not true, it's not historically accurate in this town.
Okay, well, last year.
That's why Andrea was asking.
And that's how I'm training him to do it.
Cause I know where you're going.
So, and also to add to it, I have fully intended coming new year to do the electrical inspection portion of the permit.
Yeah.
Be, to get increased as well, to be more in line with that, because other towns are substantially more career electrical portion than it is right now. So that will get changed to be covering that.
Right, so tech, so technically any revenues we take in from that should basically cover his stipend, yeah.
Absolutely, because every, currently every inspection is twenty-five dollars that I had on there in the past. Prior to this year, they were free. If you had a building permit, and then every inspection also was free, and now I have, I have twenty-five dollars for every inspection. And I'll increase that to fifty dollars for electrical inspections for that, to be more in line. Some towns do, uh, per dollar, if you're spending ten thousand to do an electrical job on a building, it'll be per dollar. But, um, smaller towns typically do just a set fee, this is how much it is per inspection.
Okay, what do we anticipate for supplies at twenty-three hundred dollars or?
Oh, actually, I think.
That included the laptop.
Increase, I believe it was, that increased four my platform.
Yes, it was.
So this one, that includes, so we did, that didn't get changed when we did a budget, we kept flat. So this had included the laptop, so definitely. Well, so there you can take the twenty-six hundred, I'll take the difference between that, at least move it there, so I'm down.
So what are we gonna drop that to?
I don't know, at this point in time, but that in the line, that would get dropped.
I know his laptop was around thirteen hundred, if I remember correctly. Plus, almost exactly what we raised here.
So we need to increase that one by thirteen hundred.
But I guess we're not gonna make that decision tonight, but it's a line that we can change. So when we need again, if the O S, we can, we can shift the numbers to, or unless you're, unless you're recommending, Carl, that you change the supply line.
Well, I mean, I've, that's like the only supplies besides what Carol's gotten me in the office, but I've had to give.
So.
His supplies.
I think I got a printer.
Yeah, he, he got a printer.
Printer and computers all of that.
So, so you're saying the supply line would technically be only now supplies would be coming like office, which we use downstairs, so we could put this to a dollar?
I don't charge anything, we've spent two things charged to that line this year, his laptop and his printer.
Right, so any other office supplies, we come out of.
The general, the general office supplies, yeah, I've never needed anything else.
So yes, so I would say, so you're okay if that line goes to a dollar.
I mean, unless we can go, like, uh, tests of any kind, um, I don't know. If we ever have in the future tests for like mold or anything like that, those, those tests are gonna be like seventy-five bucks. I don't know.
Water testing.
Well, water testing's got its own line.
Right.
But yes, Scott, go ahead.
So, so where I'm going with this is that we, we need to keep in mind, because I'm watching us go through this budget and literally clip everything. This budget that we have is a current budget from twenty-twenty-three.
Right.
Is not even a budget that could fund this town in twenty-twenty-four. Even if you had zero changes. You gave no raises. Contracts, fuel, electricity, inflation, this twenty-twenty-three number wouldn't even fund the town in twenty-twenty-four. So to take these lines, if his. So to take these lines, if his printer breaks February fifth, we're gonna spend, we're gonna.
Printer's on the contract, right, Carol?
She just told me that, no.
I don't think so.
No.
Oh, he is, it's a cheap printer.
It's a cheap printer, but I just, but I just dealt with it at the highway department today. So if I'm gonna zero that line out to a dollar, and now I gotta go buy a printer, that's five hundred bucks. Now, five hundred bucks doesn't seem like much, but when you have nowhere to pull five hundred from?
Can I just ask, you just, you just said we're clipping numbers, I'd like to know when I voted.
I didn't, no, I'm saying the discussion is going towards it, like, we're looking at zeroing out a, a supply line, for what?
I didn't discuss that at all, I'm, I'm waiting till the night that the BOS discusses. This is night, the night for the department heads to say their budget.
And I'm just saying that there's a lot of conversation, and I'm looking at that, and we're, we're gonna dollar it out, like, why?
So, so what I'm asking, that's why I'm asking, what were you comfortable with that number being? And again, we'll have to realize, we did not have a budget, we are going by what was there last year, so now we're discussing this, which we should have had this prior to tonight. So, Carl, based off of what you recommended for supply line, what would you, because we need to put in here a number from the department head, so when we meet as the board of selectmen in the budget committee meets, we have a number that's solid from you.
Um, I mean, I guess enough to cover, if I have any sort of failure in the office, like, like a thousand dollars.
Also, you resource material, Tom, like your books that I buy for you and stuff?
Right, yeah, there are, there are.
So you're saying you want that line to be at that?
Right, then if, if it begins to break, I do have to, to get something.
Any other, any other lines you would be looking to change, other than the supply line, the electrical salary line?
I don't know anything about the software on here.
And we're reaching out to Avatar, we're gonna get a number on that from Avatar.
Because it says right here that if you kind of, without.
Well, that's, that's probably because it's an annual, or annual charge.
It is, it's a contract, it's a service, not a firm.
Okay.
I'll see this.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions for us?
No, I think, and it's hard for the.
Nope, we're good, so, you're good. We're gonna talk to Christine. Keep this, we're trying to keep this, uh, moving along. So Christine, I'll apologize.
Are you gonna stay, Carl? Do you wanna follow along?
Yeah, I'll stay for a little while.
Okay, so, so Kim, do you wanna note, Rebecca, are you here as a school board rep?
Yes.
Yes, so actually, come see Tracy for a packet. So, Kim, we're gonna add.
You can sit down next to Tim.
Yeah.
I always say it backwards.
And, and, she's the VC, by the committee.
Eastman.
Okay. Okay, so I would just let you know, we have, we have discussed the welfare, but now, we didn't know you were coming, so we're going back to that section. No, so we, we had gone through and, um, saw that your budget was going from ten-one forty-two to ten thousand sixty, and noted that it was primarily due to the cell phone, and we know that that's just a month, that got a company amount, um, and your welfare supplies, get those off from the dental supplies, and that line is going to be there, and then your cell. But Andrea had a question. We haven't had, have we had much activity with welfare?
We haven't had much activity. Last time, so, I was kind of saying that I spent a lot of hours on the government and on the home, and finding resources for them, but didn't entail, at least had a spending volume. Uh, we had stopped in it, you know, for our application.
No, right, yes, and, and you're available twenty-four seven?
Correct, my site is blocked, or blocked inside.
Okay. We're good, any questions to Christine? Sorry to have you come all the way here, but hey, glad you came. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see. So, so the next section we'll do, it, so is town clerk, tax clerk, was, uh?
Um, I sent her the time, is it early for me?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you wanna.
Yeah, I don't know, um, we can do assessor, which is on page two, second section, forty-one fifty-two. So this is, uh, pretty much all contract driven, we're looking at current budget nineteen-three twenty-three, and looking to increase that to twenty-three one oh four, and that has to do, oh, well, has to do with, uh, assessing support software, but the assessing our contract with Avatar, so that's increasing twenty-four percent. So that's just the contract I think we just saw?
Yes, that's the contract.
Yeah, so the assessor is a contract that we need in Avatar, that's.
So the contracts on that.
Yep. Yeah, we're entering a new, um, five-year agreement.
Will that be locked in, Carl?
Yes. Any other questions on the assessing? Ask for it to be put in at seventeen-five. We do, I do know that we still have some outstanding attorney bills that are coming in, uh, for this year.
Do you think you're gonna go over the fifteen?
No, we, it, I don't anticipate it will, but we may be close to.
Yeah.
And do you anticipate more legal activity next year?
Um, I'm hoping not.
I was gonna say, hopefully not.
But I just don't know, you gotta roll the dice and, and you.
Well, I mean, sometimes you kinda know what's on the horizon.
Yeah, well, I don't anticipate, but I think seventeen-five is a conservative number, that's what I'm anticipating it being, so.
Do you pay them a hourly rate?
Yes, yes. It's a minute interval.
I believe.
Fifteen, yeah, fifteen minute intervals, so if it's two minutes, it, we could try fifteen.
Is it still with Mitchell Brook?
No, no, okay. It's with Woods.
We have two.
Drummond and Woodsman.
That we have with Mitchell Brook that we didn't transfer over.
Right, we do, yes.
All do, and it's new.
There's four sentences in Mitchell usually, so why, why Drummond, I'm just wondering, because Mitchell usually, she really knows that.
We've had better.
Market experience.
Yes.
Yeah, better experience. Um, let's go to the admin, next section forty-one fifty-five, which is the health, dental longevity goes up to increase to two ninety-two, eight ninety, four percent in most driving, that primarily is the dentists, den, dental insurance, um, longevity, and the workers' comp, workers' comp is up twelve percent.
Um, how insurance can it go up, because ours went up in twenty-two percent.
No, we changed, we chose a different plan that kinda kept its, uh.
There's two factors, the twenty-five percent, the increase in three percent in the employee portion, which put the employee portion really out of the affordability of that current plan, so we changed plans, but it's a very similar plan, just have a little bit of higher deductible society service.
Okay.
So the, I, I don't know my glasses.
No, sorry.
But the employee portion in twenty-three for a family is that.
Mm-hmm.
And in twenty-four.
Yeah, we can get, uh, they wanna copy of that, um.
Yeah, I can send this insurance.
Yeah, actually.
The board already has it.
Yep. Um. Let's go to the next page. Oh, was there a question about this section, the admin section?
Is it possible, I know we talked about that here, but for, like, workers' comp and insurance and all of that, could it be broken down to what it costs for each department to give like a true reflection of like what it costs?
I think so, I think they, I think it's split out by.
Yes, well, yes and no, we can get reports from Primex that tell us, you know, claims-wise, they can, they can tell us which department generated the claims, and then we could figure out percentage claims, and then do the percentage premium.
I guess what I'm saying is that it would be nice to be a true reflection of what each department costs or run. At like for the highway departments, but cost to insure those three guys for workers' comp and health insurance and, and that, it would just be nice to see that, that like to give everyone that true transparency or breakdown.
So last year, I think that was asked at the town meeting, and I was able to, I provided it by department, but I think the workers' comp, I think I just divided that by the number of employees in, in, in.
I actually do have a little bit of a worry about.
And they attributed that to each department, I, it wasn't properly, it was true representation of workers' comp, but I just for these purposes.
Because comp of workers' comp, is it, does it have to do with like a calculation of a number of things?
So, so basically, your claims are your EMR reading, right, and then it's a formula, but, so they take your payroll, and then they distribute what your, your yearly premium is, they'll distribute a thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-six, you know, payroll that we have. Um, our premium's seventy-five six seventy-six for workers' comp, highways twenty-three thousand, ambulance rescue seventy-five hundred, fire sixteen-seven, um, police is nineteen-three forty, office employees eight hundred ninety-eight, um, buildings and maintenance is three hundred and thirty, um, and then they have a separate, or winter maintenance for highway, which is another sixty-three hundred, and then everybody, all municipal, like, assessing, clerks, and, you know, all the little, the deputy tax clerk, all those is a thousand.
So in that, it's waiting.
But it's not by claims, it's by payroll.
It's broken down, you take your payroll, and then it's broken down by classification of what the employee does for a job, and then your claims activity is a factor that's applied to the premium.
Yeah.
Whether you have good claims experience or bad claims experience, right?
It could be a, it could be a decade.
Two years behind, so it's not the current year claims, it's two years from before.
So to your, to your question, yes, there is a.
That could be done. It would be a lot for a new bookkeeper to do.
But, I mean, and I'm not even saying like just all of, but just for, if you put it kind of like on the, like a sign note, just showing like the true reflection of like what each department's.
You could do like a percentage, like, you know, this department is twenty percent.
I can, you might look at like one department and say at the bottom of that department
budget, oh, it's five hundred thousand for one department, just throw a number. In actuality, by the time you're done with workers' comp, health insurance, and all the others, so it costs you a lot more.
Okay.
It's like those hidden things that people don't see and understand.
Yeah. We have two.
Two, two, one, that is his first time getting it, so I think it'll be five hundred, I, I don't know the topic, but I think it's five hundred, and then the other.
How many years do you have to work here?
Five. So I think he's gonna get five hundred, and then the other is, um, three, three thousand?
Yeah, so why I don't know why it's thirty-three hundred.
Because that's a twenty-five year quarter.
So is that thirty-one hundred? Because, or is it six hundred and three thousand, it's total's thirty-six hundred, so each bunch is like that. So I thought it was like five, three, um. Um, so.
I think it's three thousand and six hundred.
Which that makes sense. Um, so we good with that section, we'll move to the next page and go to forty-one ninety-four, which is government. So the section, that section forty-one ninety-four is the total budget this year, forty-seven five twenty, that looks to be increased to five thousand five twenty, total overall six percent, including the fire and the municipal, the whole town hall, not only that, is the repairs, well, and the repairs, the re, the reason for the repairs.
Um, ten-ten for the alarm.
Yes, I was gonna say, the alarms is, so.
That wasn't previously budgeted for.
So ten-ten for each line, correct?
That's for each building.
Right, so it's three thousand thirty, oh.
Ten-ten, I think you've seen it on your monthly reports, like, under budgeted ten-ten alarm, every month I write that off the side.
It was never put in the budget.
So it's not really a.
It's for building and maintenance. It could be moved to building and maintenance.
You could, for all buildings? I always thought the building and maintenance was for the municipal building, that's the way I was taught, but that might not be correct.
It's probably however we define it, I guess.
So if that's what you want, each department has its own building and maintenance line?
Uh, no, actually, maybe, oh, yeah, building and maintenance, you do it, yes, they do. So maybe that's what we need to do, we need to do it to each line, to building. Fire has building and maintenance, uh, highway, highway does not have.
Police does not?
Highway's.
Police doesn't either.
Police does.
So why is that?
I don't, I don't know, this is.
Why doesn't the police, was that the question you just said?
Yeah, because, is that different?
So if the furnace broke, and we shared a furnace, we could make a line for. The municipal office building maintenance is in one, so if we must put it, we would just cut it half.
So where is the building maintenance for the highway?
I think I, I use this repairs highway garage when something happens over there.
Oh, yeah, repair highway, which is on the garden. Something to look at, something to, you know.
So in the, in the, um, the way, you know, the charter accounts that was supposed to follow forty-one ninety-four is repairs and maintenance for any town-owned property, all electricity for all town-owned properties, stuff like that, so really the file of repair needs, building, whatever, really should be in forty-one ninety-four, we don't do it for like.
So maybe, maybe we need to revisit those counts or whatever, so.
I think we should revisit electricity too, because you're gonna be over, just by looking at these numbers, you can do the average on your electricity for the town hall, I'm sorry, for your, um, highway fire department, and then you're way under on your municipal, and then your.
Well, the, the, um.
Rates, rates decreased dramatically.
Which is great.
We went with the co-op, and so it locked into a lower rate.
Okay.
So the first, then the co-op didn't kick in until like August, but, because it took like three months to kick in.
Yeah, but you do it with fees.
So our, our higher were the first half of the year, but we went to the co-op, but.
And ever so, it's just dropped in August or September.
The rates, but what about the delivery fees and all that stuff?
Well, it's up, the delivery fees calculated off the rate.
Oh, off the rate, so, okay, because then you're like way over in your municipal, like at sixty, um, if you do your, like, your calculation, by the end of the year, you're gonna get six thousand eight thirty-five, and you request ninety-six hundred or a department one.
Yeah.
So just, I think with this, we should be, I think, or something like that.
Um, any other questions for this section?
Where do the, uh, street lights go?
Uh, there, there, um.
They have their own line.
They have their own line, okay.
Yeah.
In this forty-one ninety-four.
Thank you.
Did you ever find out about the street lights? I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
It's out front of the municipal building.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm working with a gentleman from public service, street lighting is on, it's anywhere the school diesel is and stuff like that, so I'm on the third page, and that. So if we have no more questions or conversation on the government, that's paid, often paid, which is property liability, forty-one ninety-six. That, yes. So, property liability is next.
Yes, so we got, um, let's, right here, they said tax bill wages from twenty-three to twenty, ah, I'm sorry. I think I have the wrong property.
I knew it, this, I knew it's a property.
Yeah, I have the other one.
Yeah, I know, sorry.
Um, so our property values stayed the same from twenty-three to twenty-four, we didn't acquire any new property, um, our payroll is, so twenty-three was based on twenty-one payroll, twenty-four is based on twenty-two payroll, so from twenty-one to twenty-two, we had a ten percent, ten twenty-eight percent decrease in payroll, and then our loss, our loss ratio increased, um, and so we have a nine percent increase in property liability, forty-eight hundred dollars.
But that, but that amount is based off of the contract that we get?
So before the property values increased?
No, they stayed the same. But our twenty-three loss ratio was point eight six and our twenty-four loss, loss ratio was point eight nine.
So they didn't increase any building values or anything?
And they come and assess all the buildings.
Did you have any question why everything else went up so much, but none of municipal buildings and properties went up?
Went up, talking about the.
This is the insurance.
This is the insurance.
No, but you had said it has to do with like.
Yes, it does. So basically, I think, I mean, we can ask the question, but it's not where your, your house is based on sales.
So I find it funny that none of that went up, because I know my house, everything's gone up because the cost of building has gone up. We can ask that question, but it's probably better to stay where we are.
Yep, I agree with you.
Cause like, was that stopped for next year?
Because we raised a lot of work, then our insurance is gonna go up, it's gonna hurt. This is gonna be the loss. Then that would be the thing, I mean, it's.
The cost of construction, the cost of construction now is cheaper than it was last year. Materials have gone down, everything has kinda plateaued.
The board can let me know if you wanna have that considered or not.
So that was, so the next section, we're gonna go to the first page, the town block tax budget, so come on up, Teresa, and have a seat here, and we'll discuss this section. So this, so the forty-one forty, forty-one forty, forty-nine forty-nine, forty-one fifty, combination of thirty-three, is total budget for this year is fifty thousand two forty-two. That looks, you can speak to, cause I think you, like the moderator, the supervisor, the balance clerk, for elections? Cause we have more elections next year.
And I did a little bit of increase in this type of.
So that takes care of those, those increases. So now, I guess, Teresa, the computer and software, or is that you, you hear software? So that's you, computer and software, so you're going from thirty-four fifteen to thirty-six, I'm assuming that's just the bill.
That, those are the state releases from Avatar?
Uh, same with the active vote machine, and that's primarily because of the four, the elections.
Those four elections.
Um, and then the mortgage.
Three election, the town election.
Right, which we don't use yet. Um, mortgage search now, so I guess this question is, we have budgeted six hundred, we haven't used anything, or is there a bill and on for that, and it's looking to increase to eleven hundred?
So the mortgage service, I'm not sure that we did anything, because we did not do the, I missed the deadline. The reason why I'm switching mortgage companies, or the mortgage service companies is because one of the reasons seems to be a little bit more difficult to deal with. I did meet this new company that paid tax collector conference, and I've had several conversations with them since I went to that conference, and they're a lot more easier to deal with, I guess, and a little bit more responsive. I feel like we're gonna get a little bit more help from them. They also send reminders out also, so that we don't end up missing deadlines along with Avatar.
So.
So that's just an estimate, depending on how many searches we end up having to do every year.
So this eleven hundred would be based off the same amount of searches that the six hundred was for last year?
Uh, I believe that's how we updated it. I mean, it's kinda hard to tell how many mortgage searches you're gonna have each year. There is a little bit more of a difference in the cost of the companies.
Yeah, as you're looking at, so I just wanna take the back, so this section, I'm sorry, is, I pulled off the budget from the co-actives, so this is twenty-six six ninety-five, looking to go to thirty-one thousand six hundred. So they're a top, I think I totally missed that one.
Do you find your markets and the mortgage search, do they send out like the deed notices and all that stuff certified, or?
Do you know?
Their.
Do you know what it is?
It is sound, title, I believe. Sorry for everyone.
Um, so, is it the town?
They are, I didn't add the cost of doing letters for us and stuff, because that's an additional cost. And when I talked to Janelle, she said that it's better to just keep our hands on it and set up a letter for itself.
How, so how do you think it works, like this number, do you know, did you have like an amount, or are you just? Excuse me, mortgage searches, usually you have less than about a hundred, it's a hundred fifty, usually the lien, and a deed.
Right.
I mean, I don't know about middle plan, I'm trying to think of when I used to do it, but we had more like sixty to eighty when we searched. I'm just trying to figure out what the charging for search.
Sorry.
Is that where you're going? Yeah, I think so.
It sounds like their charging looks like twenty dollars per.
It's, it's close to that.
And that's the golden rate right now, anyway, so, and you're looking probably about, cause if you have sixty at twenty.
And I think, I think we guessed.
What you're gonna get that year or whatever, so.
But like I said, the, the other company that we used was not very responsive enough. I am not the only one that did not get a response back, there were other people, other clerks and tax partners and.
Put those deadlines in half, I think that's their deadlines as well.
Um, okay, um, so the other question I would have is restoration of records, are we having anybody do any work for us this year?
We did not do that this year. There were other things that I just decided to tap on.
No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, we will be definitely, I'll be getting that information from Janelle, and I'll be reaching out to them as soon as I can to have that. Cause I know that there was another gentleman that had taken over. I believe since the last time that she didn't have him do anything.
Um, the next section, which is collecting the forty-one fifty section, so this one is where it's fifty thousand two forty-two, the next budget, next year is budgeted at is fifty-one two seventy-seven. It looks like the two things that are pushing, increasing that is the computer software, I'm assuming that's Avatar?
Yeah.
And that's just contract, we got the total of the twenty-eight hundred dollars, and then the other one's the tax book, so.
I have a question, sorry, from the active vote machine, for Andrea, who's coming in? Oh, you don't know?
It's next year, isn't it?
Cause I know it's, it's toward the beginning of two thousand twenty-four, we have to purchase one.
Well, it has, it has to be in effect for two thousand twenty-four or twenty-five?
Twenty-four or twenty-four.
Okay, yeah, so, and we've talked about it, and we're gonna, we will probably present a warrant on it. Once, once we know what machine it is that the state is telling us that we have to go with. Well, when you say expensive, I mean, what I was told before was between four and seven, eight thousand dollars.
It's under ten, about.
Oh, okay, so it's under ten, so I mean, that's. When you, well, it is, but I mean.
Gonna sit in that closet most of the day.
Cost of the actual.
Cause I think they were looking at three different ones, and each one had a different price.
The cost of unit's six thousand, and then there's a laptop that goes along with it, that's a thousand, and then it's five hundred for printer, and then it's five hundred per election for maintenance.
It's always a tackle.
It's always.
Okay, but I think the idea was, is we would be looking, cause it's a one-time thing, so we would look to probably do a warrant on that, cause there's no way, Captain, we're finding that money.
No, I, I think it's not, yeah, I, I.
And again, where it's a one-time, I think that's, that's my opinion.
And then from what I was told, we did purchase the active vote machine used a few years ago, and that was why that may have been cheaper, I guess, at the, at the cost, but that's why there's probably a huge difference.
Doesn't sound like there's gonna be an option for any town, is it?
No.
And.
It says twenty-five per person for a session. How much are we getting now? I thought it was thirty.
That doesn't, many people show up.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
But it's twenty dollars per person. Well, it's six, it's six percent.
Six percent.
So I went to seventy-five. Uh, on the deputy tax clerk, what's, there's.
We're gonna pay.
Uh, right now it's sixteen.
Isn't that some of the state? She's, she's, I don't know her actual hierarchy is off the top of my head that I know, she's close to getting the stuff up to the seventeen, that was a great one. But that will remain the same at seventeen.
So she currently is sixteen?
But this budget is based off of seventeen?
Yes.
Okay.
How many hours?
Sixteen.
Sixteen hours?
Sixteen hours, how many hours you say? She, well, it's budgeted for seventeen, oh, sorry, sorry.
The credit can be moved down after the grace of the ninety day. Hey, you're good, you're good to go.
Is it the mileage pressure, is that the federal amount that we pay?
So yeah, right now it's sixty-five-five.
Whatever the Fed.
Yeah, okay, but the, the thing, oh, Teresa goes, um, I wa, I wasn't sure if anybody had heard anything about that, like if it's gonna be doing that, cause they did a big jump, right? And that's why we're, well, we're thirty-eight and it's four.
Are you talking about the treasure line?
Yeah, but not the salary.
No, I thought you were talking about mileage, the mileage is twelve hundred.
And we've already spent thirty, forty-two, we still have two months left.
Right.
So the department head budget is twelve hundred still, and I'm thinking, no matter, I think that line.
Yeah, no, right, so I mean, that was what was given to us for a number.
Right, so I wanted to ask Teresa while she was still here, if she wanted to reconsider, cause I, that was one that I carried, because it wasn't one that she'd broken out.
The only reason why I didn't do the increase is just, of, of anything, was just because of the fact that I wasn't sure since it.
They would still give mileage, at least my understanding is they would still.
Her average mileage that she goes to the bank, that's how you usually figure it out, you do average and.
That's why I'm not sure why there would be an increase, because I mean.
Twenty-two miles or?
It is twenty-two. Think about it, she is eleven, and I think she goes each way on a separate line, so does that sound right?
Yeah, a hundred miles sounds right, twenty, yeah.
So twenty-two miles, and anytime, I mean, she's open three days a week, so she could go on three times a week, so twenty-two times three, I think, you know, twenty-two to the back.
Captain's doing the math, let's come over.
I think you moved into mileage enforcement, it was an all or nothing, so if you did it for one, I'd. I think we moved into the last year, it's an all or nothing, so if you did mileage for one, twenty.
Twenty-two.
There's, there's another mileage over here.
Twenty-two or twenty-six.
On the person who did the mileage for the executive.
Yeah, so I think if you were to take it away from early.
Early. I can't see what's mileage.
And that was twelve hundred.
Yeah, so it came out, like if she went all three days to the bank, then it would be twenty-two forty-seven would be the amount for mileage. But you know that she doesn't go every single time, but that's like.
Twenty-two hundred.
Typically, she'll go every day during tax season.
Okay.
Maybe twice, so I just don't know.
Depending on, but, but there is an amount that she.
Let's pick the board.
Yep.
And the treasurer's a stichen?
Yes, yes, and that's going to be the point of the position next year. Not for the. So go from the bond from elected to appointed, and that would be a present time.
And a stichen for the service, Annie?
Um, why March and what you.
Because the election goes to, the election happens, so my, my understanding is, is what I'm reading.
When the positions elected.
Her term is up, yeah.
Her term is up.
Thank you.
Can't remove an elected official, that's what it comes down to.
Right, and if I, I have to go to the next election, cause I remember talking about saying we need to get some help. Any, okay, so, let's go to, oh, perfect. Come on, Chief, you're ahead, but we're, we're ahead, so this works out well.
Quick question, Carol, did you find that how this does figure?
No, but I, I'm pretty sure it's like two sixty.
No, it's three oh, three hundred eight, one hundred and four.
It would be three eighty, that was what it was with these utilities, it was three forty-seven.
Somebody has it.
That's, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're on page four, in section four-two-one-zero, police, police. So we have currently a budget of two ninety-five nine oh six, and it's looking to go to a three fourteen four forty-two. This is being generated mostly by salaries and some dues and vehicle. So, um, so I guess I'll ask you, Chief, you have put in for, it looks like five percent increase for all salary lines up until on call.
That's correct.
Oh, and except for the police secretary, that looks like a seven percent.
Yeah.
Given that we're under the tax cap, two percent, I'm just looking for some maybe reasoning as to how you came up with the five percent.
Sure. Uh, that, those lines didn't receive a, any increase in the past cycles. As we all know, the workforce shortage in terms of law enforcement, so I think to keep those lines competitive and still don't become stubborn, so we're going to do, we follow the officers we have through labor requirements, who are willing to offer more, but from having to start new, or having to go without those positions filled.
So I have a question about, I guess, I have a question regarding the prosecution line is sixty-five hundred, we've only spent fifty-five hundred out of that. Is there a weird expectation to spend enough out of that this year, or did it just go up to sixty-five hundred for next year?
I haven't been notified of any increase in that line, but I think what may have happened, now I realize that you said that, the typically, I think, in the prosecution line in the past, maybe you want to get SWAT teams some out of that.
That's, yes, and so that had been up, had put up into the dues line, is that correct?
Yeah, cause I think it was more appropriate that it is our due date for that yearly membership of the Stafford County SWAT.
That's, yeah, and I, I think I came across that, I just, that's I didn't want to have that application on that, so.
So I think it came out of that line last year, the dues line, so that's why that line was over maybe.
Yeah.
So I wanted to just see if we could get that in the way.
Right, so, okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Chief, remind, did you see that sixty-five hundred back?
Yes, you can do that.
So we're gonna reduce the prosecution line to fifty-five hundred because of this line was highlighted? Yes.
No, I believe it was about.
It went up.
Oh, it did.
It, this past year while you were not here, it went up, it was fifteen hundred.
So, so we're keep, the prosecution line is gonna stay, it's gonna go to fifty-five hundred, and we're gonna keep the dues line at seventeen hundred, is that correct? On the department, twenty twenty-four department head budget?
Um, I didn't look at that.
Yeah, no, that's fine. You have seventeen hundred in there, and it says that, this is as various memberships and dues necessary for the department include Stafford County Regional Tax, which is SWAT. As a member, well, that just refers to SWAT, you have that as seventeen hundred, so I don't know what else.
So if we could amend that line, the dues line to eighteen hundred. So if we could amend that line, the dues line to eighteen hundred?
Okay. So from seventeen to eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. Yep.
Are you full-time officers? How many are on that line that year?
Uh, there are two on that line.
On this line? Okay.
Yes.
Then how many?
And part-time, yeah, that's kind of in the course right now. We have two, we have three on the part-time. And maybe changing to two possibly, one, not sure. How things go with people that might be looking to tag or relooking.
And what is, what does the starting pay for, for a part timer?
Part timer, I believe, was somewhere around twenty-one, twenty-two.
That's the start.
And again, I know that that's, that's on the old side for the jobs for the area. We have people starting in the Elton, Travis, or maybe nineteen fifty. They're going to start out trained up, so, you know, putting themselves at risk and potentially taking time off from their regular job or working extra to fill that.
Did you have a question, Christine? Did you not give them two percent of last year?
Yes.
Okay. So we have been consistently giving them.
Yes, there was a cost to live in that, and I believe that they would have gotten that.
Oh, and.
Well, I don't believe that.
Well, one of our officers wasn't here a whole year, so he didn't get it. And he'll be out before this year. He started like, I think, what, October? You know, last year he didn't get it. And I'm talking about, he started in October.
Right.
So, but now he's been here, so he hasn't got it.
Right.
And then have, has board thought the NHMA to locate first so competitive, as we did last year?
Yes.
To compare. Right across.
Department throughout the state, so I can get those numbers to show.
Do you know where they got them from? Because we look and we got through NHMA.
From every D E.
Any other? What's the police secretary's current wage?
Sixteen fifty per hour. And yours? Sixteen hours per week.
So I was informed that some of the agreement where when she got hired, she was starting something, this was during my absence, and she'd be bumped up to what the regular patient paid, which I believe is seventeen. So I believe she's spending all that time without catching up to where it should be.
What were the vehicles doing? Did you see any?
There, there may be an issue with one of the explorers we have. It seems to be something in one of the axles. And there wouldn't be other warranty at this line. So we try to locate at least, you know, not, not wear there more on one than the other. But, you know, the miles add up and, you know, try to keep them.
But you don't see, foresee yet one any time.
I don't in this cycle. Next year, we might have to address that. Or we may have one of the SUVs on the deal on the higher side of mileage and might be the time to trade that in while it still has a decent value and get something to replace that.
Do you know what we have in our capital reserve, please, Chris?
The detail? I just made it twenty-two deposit. You can get the note.
I didn't get the note, but I heard, I heard a figure. I can't recall it exactly, but I want to say.
It's in, it's in the fifties to sixty thousand.
Someone.
Total.
Total.
Yeah. It's not going to be able to go from there or afford it.
So are we using any of that, that fund money for maintenance? Because that's part of.
Well, it could be, just like the ambulance money could be used for maintenance. But the problem is that, that like our details with our low force, we've done no details this year. I think we've done one or two.
Well, I think, and I think the other thing is we finally got the detail, police detail account along with Truda, we've been on the audit. So now we know, you know, do the maintenance of it, if it can be utilized, knowing how much money is in there.
Well, just then offset the maintenance or repair because that was one of the things.
Right, no, and I don't disagree, but I think it, I think what we, we weren't, we were running on balance. We were unsure. So I think that's, nobody wanted to touch that and go into until we have the full reconciliation of that. I know that you saw, you met with the auditors to go over how the money, how the balance came up to become, I mean, we deposited into the police detail. I think we're in the spot now, finally.
And one of the things Scott and I talked about too was the detail part is just the fact that like it's not where you need it to be to purchase a cruiser. And if we had like a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there, then we'd be like, oh, definitely. We'd start paying for maintenance out of it. I think we can see that. But at this point, it's kind of sort of like.
Um, any other questions, comments?
Um, one question, it's not a budget meeting, was, I don't know who asked it. If the cruisers are rotated because there's so many.
We do have to repair, we have to get it better on the cruiser that had it using it all these trying to get it.
Any other questions? Any questions, comments for us?
I don't think so.
You're good to go. Thanks. Thank you. Kim, did you know that we can say Janelle showed up? Did she get?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we calm for everybody here. So Dan is here. So we'll go to highway.
Oh.
So that's like forty-three eleven. Come right up there in the hot seat, Kim. Thanks. I'm thinking of a rest.
No, buddy, am I?
Uh, okay. So we're on like the third page from the back. So current budget is three hundred and forty-nine seventy. Primarily being driven fuel and some repairs. And culverts, I guess, still kind of a little, oh, I'm going to look at some maybe the farthest. So I guess first question I would have Dan is, obviously, it doesn't look like we're, well, obviously for fuel, we're going to surpass what was budgeted, at least on the diesel. It looks like you've increased that to be more aligned with what you expect. And again, as well for fuel. Vehicle repairs?
Yes.
Do you want, I know, I think part of that is, is that line got cut last year? And what, what, what was last year? Was it twenty thousand and it got cut?
It was nineteen.
Nineteen. And it got cut down to sixteen and you've used twenty.
And my reasoning behind that is the, the one truck that we have on order should be coming in hopefully February, March.
Yeah.
And the other two trucks that both had new springs put on, well, as rough as the roads get during the winter, if you get five years out of a set of new springs, you're doing well on a truck like that. You have, in the wintertime, you've got all plowed gear on it. You've got the sander that's full and all that. So you have added weight and, not that it's overweighting the truck, but it's putting a lot of string on all the dry gear and stuff. So with the new springs being on those trucks on the gas side, you feel comfortable with that one with the new truck.
So I have a couple of questions. Signs? It looks like we're five hundred, you're going, you're going to twelve hundred. I'm guessing that is just going to.
Yes, we overspent that line and we really didn't buy a lot of signs. We just did the replacement signs for the ones that were missing. We've had some stolen. We had a couple that were faded, a couple that went over. So if you, if you look at what we had, I think we were, we were five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Just a, just a U-channel post is like fifty bucks for just a post that holds the.
So basically, you're going off of what you purchased this year is probably what you're going to, okay.
Yes.
Couple of the highway seasonal, I see we haven't spent it. Do we, are we, do we have any prospects?
We do have, we do have a guy that's, that's going to come to us.
And you'll come to the board?
We'll have to go over that with him.
Okay.
And that, that number's, that number will work.
Okay. Perfect.
The person that we have that's coming in is going to work during the storms. They're not going to be there for a solid, you know, forty hours and then, so they're going to come in during the storm and when we need them. So that's going to work out great for, you know, one.
Everybody. So I see on your highway tree pruning, it looks like the same amount. Is there money going to be, are you going to look to spend anymore this year or is that?
Uh, we do have the work scheduled. It's supposed to be done before the end of the fiscal year. I think they spotted the end of November, first of December, five trees that are going to be cut.
Oh.
So if you do see one with yellow caution tape, that's one that the town is going to be paying for. The white and blue ones are still part of the ever source.
Okay.
Tree work.
I have a question.
Yes.
On your highway full-time money justification sheet, you had two percent increase for the salary line, but on the spreadsheet, it shows a four percent. What are you asking for?
Twelve percent?
Yeah. Two percent would be a hundred and ten, one eighty.
I, yeah, I just, I just put in two percent on that just because that's what you guys, I, I don't have a copy of your spreadsheet, so I don't know.
You want? Well, you have one twelve, four eighty-six. So.
It was one oh eight.
So what is two percent of one oh eight?
It's twenty-one sixty forty.
No, no, I need total number.
One ten, one eighty.
One ten, one eighty.
It would be a mathematical.
Forty. Okay.
Care on my part.
It's okay.
I'm not sure you were down correct for whatever you wanted.
Oh, yeah, no, I, you know, and ultimately, it's, it's, it's up to you guys. We can ask. And, you know, obviously, everybody would like to have what the increase on your living is, but, you know, we all, you know, this is reality. I live in a town too as well, so I know, you know, it's a small town and, you know.
Dan, what's the rental equipment?
Rental equipment, that is, we're looking. Winter sand, haven't done it yet. But that used to be at fifteen thousand. And that got cut a couple of years ago. And we haven't had a chance. We've been working off of the sand, the stone and the gravel from what they've had, what they had done previously beginning here. So we've been fortunate to have a stockpile of all that material. Well, if you go right down to Ridge Road, the salt yard there, you'll see that the sand pile is diminished, the gravel pile is diminished. So this, we're going to have to replace that, which is what I plan on doing, renting Bush, Karen's, Karen Brothers screening. And we'll do that in-house. And that will save us some money. And then as far as the gravel and stuff goes, when you screen the sand, you're going to get stone and, and caillons. So what you do is you have that crush, that'll, that'll produce the stone and the gravel that will run in. We won't be doing that this year. And if, and if we do run into the problem, then, you know, I'll have to fall back on that block grant, which we do have monies in that, but, so that's, that's the plan is with that.
All right. So you're all right. I'll make that.
Yeah, no, and, and see, so the thing with, the thing with our budget is it seems like we do spending at the end, it would be. Well, because it would fit into, it would fit into us. Right. Because right now, you know, we just ordered salt. We don't have any more room for salt in the salt shed. So it's approximately three thousand dollars a load. So you're only looking at three more loads there. So that money will probably get spent before the fiscal year ends for that. It doesn't take long. You know, that's why we have to watch what we're doing. We're not just out there like drunken sailors putting this stuff out. We're, you know, there's, there's.
Oh, no, I know.
No, I, I just, just so, just so people are aware.
I appreciate that.
How much that actually costs. It's a big, big item and it goes quick. It's, it's, you know, that's, that's why we have to keep an eye on it.
I have one final question. Dan, is the calcium chloride, is that, are we going to get that or, because I see we haven't spent anything.
Yes, and that, so what I did was I broke that out of the, the original salt line.
Yeah.
Uh, just so we could keep track of that. So that's kind of my, my buffer for my salt. I do have two thousand gallons. We have a thousand gallon tank, uh, three thousand gallon tank right now. So I could order another thousand gallons.
Yeah, I think that.
It, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's nice to have the, you know, that in that separate line. It would be nice to have that for, you know, something like that in the diesel line as well, but we don't.
I don't have any other questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
Karen, on the gas and diesel, what is your justification? Is it how many miles per gallon? Like, what is your average that you're like getting this number for?
Well.
Fifteen thousand. I just don't want to see what we did for that, yes, last year and be like, oh, this is what we think and then there's.
All right, so. So it's basically usage.
Yes.
And so our usage, we have to, you know, we have to go off an average. And I would say, you know, we've been keeping an eye on, you know, not, you know, wasting fuel.
No, no, I get that. Do you, do you know what the average per gallon, that you guys, it's running in the, on diesel or gas? Well, you can give it to me. It's in like the three fifty, two fifty.
Yeah. But I mean, we were, I mean, we were. You know, if, if you look at it, we were, we were in all car as far as, you know, as far as the diesel and stuff goes, yeah, we're over. We've got to get through November here, which we're halfway through almost. And we've got to get into December. So hopefully, we don't have too many, that four letter word events. And, and we won't go too much further over than that. And hopefully, hopefully, it stays on the way it's going. It has been going down through the shutdown thing, you know, the behinders and all that. So I would imagine that price is probably going to stay, you know, four dollars or just, just shy of it. So, all right.
Anything else? Anything for us, Dan?
Uh, no, I just, you know, look, looking at everything, one of the things that we're going to have to look for, I don't know what they used to take the money out of before, if they took it out of the block grant or if they took it out of paving money, which I don't really want to touch the paving money, just because, you know, there's, there's a lot of roads that need pavement. But crush gravel and what we have to do is get companies coming and crush that and we'll be able to do that in-house. Just something.
So if that's, if that's something that, if that's something you'd look to be doing once, you know, like every so many years?
Right. So the pile that we had, the pile that we had there, I want to say it was, I think it was thirty thousand ton that they had, which sounds like a lot, but it really isn't. Probably a, a regular truck like ours, a six wheeler will hold eight to ten ton. So.
Right. So with the idea of crushing gravel, you could look for to do, extend beyond like one year's use or two year.
Right, right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we would need to do that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think we would need to do that. I mean, we have been adding, uh, gravel a lot of roads, the culvert- Stone, uh, we already got the sand, sand with-
So I would, I, I'm not speaking for, just saying, it's, I would recommend getting the prices to how much you would look to, how much you would, how much that cost would be and then potentially-
The crush.
Yeah, put it in as a warrant article?
Yeah.
That's what I would suggest.
And, um, you know, like, like you said, this year there are gonna be, uh, some lines that are going to be going back, to the, uh, to the, to the balance, however, however we want to word that. Um, you know, like our, uh, part-time seasonal. We didn't have a part-time seasonal guy last year, so that line there is not gonna be used up.
Yeah, but unfortunately that doesn't come into play for next year.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. You know, it's, I, I just didn't want you guys to forget it.
So if you were looking to crush and say it was fifteen thousand, I would say crush it. I would say do that and use your fifteen out of this because- So much more for next year, so.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's-
Yeah, no, I hear you.
We're, you know, we're running out of fiscal year.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and, and you know, it's-
So I would recommend getting the price on that and keeping that in the stock.
Yep.
Present that.
Sure.
Anything else?
Uh, no, everything else is, you know, like I said, um, you know, hopefully the math was better. I just, I tried to carry just two percent on some of the things and then some of the other things, you know, like the fuel and, uh-
Well, some things you can't avoid.
You know, the whole patch, um, you know, these are just items that have gone up in price. And I try to keep it, you know, within the realm and not, not get crazy with it. And we are, and, and yet two and a half years and we are still, you know, kinda feeling our way through. We're trying to, trying to get things cut back to where, um, you know, we can still operate and not have to- And, and, and we don't wanna, you know, we're not trying to get anything material sort of to do with that.
Okay, I think we're good.
Good.
Yeah. Um, so the next we have is fire, isn't it? Is he in his office?
He's in his office.
So if we wanna- Yeah, we'll get him down and out of place. We don't have time for him.
Thank you.
For the other people.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. So the next area we're gonna do is forty-two fifteen, which is the bottom page. Page four.
We already have that. We all have that.
Yes.
You have to do one more?
Numbers changed?
Numbers changed.
No, it was just the same.
Look at the middle.
Is this different?
All right, so we'll start with medical, the forty-two fifteen. Our current year's budget is ninety-three thousand. And, oh, sorry, I didn't know you had two pages. You have two pages.
I have it. If I gave it to you, you gave extra. I do, though.
All right.
All right, so the medical, the forty-two fifteen. So current year's budget is ninety-three thousand, looking to increase to ninety-four eighty, which is a two percent. All lines stay flat except for the EMS shift pay at three percent. So I assume you decided to take your two percent and put it off to the-
Shift pay.
And you're fine with the numbers being where they're at?
Yes, hundred percent.
What about the medical supply? Where are you over?
This is medical supply line, we're all over, but we have to get the ambulance up to medical, which costs money in order for us to do this, so. So we're all set with that.
Just because that's how we-
So it's kind of like a one time?
Yeah, it was kind of a one, yeah, one time, one again. We have to keep it up, but-
Yeah.
We purchase everything we need to actually pay for.
Um, any questions?
Yeah. Scott, go ahead.
EMS shift pay, uh, budgeted seventy-two thousand. As of, uh, we'll call it the first of November, we'd only spent about half of that.
Hate to address that and then also get, also get sand next year. A lot of these, um, the line items that are ready in place right now, I need to get a good baseline this year as to where I can actually shift based left and right. So at the end of this year, I'll know where I expended it, expended those lines. Since it is a bottom line budget, then I can make the proper adjustments for next year's budget to say, okay, I need to ship more money in this line. And that's ultimately what my goal is for budget-wise, so everybody can see line items actually being expended properly. Instead of just, you're over on this line, you're under, I'm trying to get that nice balance since we-
So on that shift pay line, was that, was that inclusive of the per diem idea as well or no?
That was not.
Okay, that's-
That being said, that money that was given under the warrant article for the per diem, we did not find, is gonna end up going back to the general.
Gotcha.
Uh, also that being said, that is dependent on finding somebody to actually work, work the per diem. And I believe that will work with, in our budget parameters as it is right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Connor?
How many EMS calls have you done this year?
I don't have the exact number on me. Yeah, it's like ninety. We're way under the limit.
And out of those ninety to ninety-five, how many does our account have that accounts as another channel?
Probably about seventy, seventy, like, let's say sixty calls.
Wow.
Are we covering sixty calls?
Yes.
So Duke Carroll, will we have a number here to date on a tree being built in? Twelve thousand. Is that with the, is, is the price is going up? We're still paying back-
That's five hundred a call still.
It's not set in stone. Is it when or, I think that's still like a negotiation thing. So there's no, like, open budget, a thousand dollars a call out there.
I don't know if you know this, but on those calls that we, Middleton does, you know what the return rate for like insurance pay?
I-
I don't know.
Okay, you might know, though, for concerns we know of.
Um, I think in twenty-two, we, we ended up bringing in about twenty to thirty thousand. Does that sound right to me?
Yeah.
That was what we said, it was like twenty-six something. Yeah.
That's why I'm seeing that I don't, I don't wanna say without-
No, no, I-
But it is roughly about, yeah, I would say twenty-nine.
If we collected all the wrong books-
Yeah, that's right.
It would be over a hundred dollars.
I know.
And that's all those-
Does our collection company want them?
Revolving fund, and we don't spend that.
Yes, no.
We don't spend on that. Then to pay nothing, that's the only thing we spend on that.
Do you know what we have in English moment, what we had?
Andrew, do you remember? It's eighty.
We just, that was another one that-
We just got the, I just did the transfers-
Yeah.
Like literally, like, maybe one, two weeks ago. But I wanna say the ambulance is at like eighty thousand at our-
Can only, no, it gets to be-
They're higher than the, you know. Yeah, Milton, Milton's, you know. Someone's a thousand, someone's fifteen hundred.
So with the fact that we're spending fourteen thousand and more out of the revolving fund, is it possible to take some of that EMS shift pay and take something with it? Because my concern is that if we're not replenishing it faster than we're spending it, when it comes time that we need another ambulance, that's gonna cost, you know, three hundred thousand or better, especially if you wanna put it up to a paramedic level.
So, so what I'm gonna say is tonight we just discussed the numbers. Then the BOS needs to meet to come up with our numbers and then the budget committee will get those numbers and come up, and you guys will come up with what you, how you think that should work, so. I, I mean, I'm not saying, yeah, it could be in there, but it's not gonna be something that we decide tonight.
No, I understand, but I'm just bringing it up.
Yes.
You guys are the ones that choose to take it out of that revolving-
Well, I think it's, no, I think it's-
The chief would choose to have it come out of his salary line if he wanted that.
Yeah.
I, I do wanna know, Milton, you, you, it's hard making that.
No, no, why? But I mean, I think at the time, this was all in place before-
That was set up way before, yeah.
Yeah, it was set up prior to me.
It was set up for that full purpose of, yeah, we were getting more calls.
So yes, it's conversation to have, but it's not something that-
No, I'm not saying make a decision tonight. I'm just saying it's something to think about because-
No, and I don't disagree. I, I think the ambulance, the doctor, the ambulance should be the entire depiction of what we've paid up for EMS of the year. Not a true discretion of what we made. Um, if, so if we have no more questions on EMS, doesn't sound like it comments, uh, we're gonna move to fire. So that is forty-two twenty, that's the next page. Um, so current budget is sixty-six, six fifty-one. What was provided to us last, this past Monday-
Last Monday.
Thank you. Was, uh, sixty-seven, nine eighty-four. And we just got a revision tonight that looks like it's increasing to eighty-five, four eighty-four and- Seventeen percent?
So EMS and fire line would be thirteen centuries. Thirteen centuries.
It'll be thirteen percent with the-
With the-
Combined EMS.
Combined, yeah.
Well, we're not combining EMS, we're in two separate, we're in two separate salaries.
I believe it was, was called eighteen percent each, yeah, for fire.
So eighteen percent, that's what this is gonna be. So we'll vote through it. So everything stayed flatlined is the only thing that's, well, the two things that are changing is the member expense. And initially that was at five percent and that was absorbing all the other flatlining at the time was the fire chief. Now, the only thing that's changed, the fire chief is on to twenty-six, maybe five hundred to twenty-six thousand.
Right.
And the reasoning behind that is?
So the reasoning behind that is, I believe it's about time we have a actual part-time chief, fire chief. Reasoning being, emergency management director should be shifted back to the fire chief. Fire prevention should be shifted back to the fire chief. Several- Being a fire chief, that on the fire side changes. That being said, that would also fill the role of a per diem person in town as well. Uh, one of the roles, and it coming out of fireside versus the EMS side. I do believe that change, this should have happened years ago, years and years ago. Knowing what I know now, um, grants, uh, meetings, everything takes place during the day. Current status of the fire chief, where he's working full-time, needing, only come in after hours, I take it several days off to make meetings, but I'm not gonna make it all.
So are you saying that the fire chief would be an EMS on-call per diem?
Absolutely, would fill that position. And that's up to you guys on what you want that criteria to be, but that's how I perceive it.
And I, and I get that and I understand that, but I guess the concern I have is, is we have, typically that's two people, so you need to have someone else to get on.
Correct, no, and I, I get that a hundred percent as well. But at the same time, the fire chief also needs to fill some other roles, uh, maintaining schedules and, again, going after grants, going after several other stuff that takes a lot of time to do.
So with that said-
Yes.
Then why wouldn't we reduce on the EMS end if we were making-
Because the way I'm thinking is if we tap into the EMS shift pay or per diem, alls we need is one more per diem out of the EMS.
So your EMS shift pay, it's stating that that's really only gonna cover one EMS shift pay?
Logically, we should, we could cover two, but logistically, the way I look at it is it's only gonna cover one because we'll have that part-time chief.
And so I guess last question is, other towns of our size, they have a part-time, they have part-time chiefs?
They, majority are shipping to part-time chiefs, yes. Barrington, uh, Barnstable, they're shipping as well. Um, they have a part-time chief, average pay is twenty-four, twenty-five thousand.
What does their staffing look like?
Their staffing is, they have two on shift during the day.
So they already have active staff?
Active staffing, yeah.
New dorms, part-time too?
And new dorms, part-time as well, yeah.
And they already have any?
Well, they're also much bigger town.
You don't have, you're people in a truck, hard to drive harder?
Absolutely, you'll, you'll have fire alarm activation at the school. I mean, it's really, we're one of the only towns that's not, the only town without a part-time, at least fire, somebody in the station or with a school, with an elementary school.
Kids in school, I think we should have a part-time, just my opinion, but, um, because we have that school there.
We have.
And we're in a different element now. For a warrant article to see if the townspeople wanted to do this.
So that's the other thing, so.
Before you put this in the operating budget, please let me finish this a little bit.
It's cheap.
So within my operating budgets, I don't foresee what my vision or what I see that the need for this bound is. I cannot do it within my operating budget. Uh, we do have that two percent tax cap, which is preventing us from going above a deal. So if this does not get approved, I'm not gonna be shy. I'm gonna go with a warrant, or one thing, we'll try and get that approved and passed.
So, right, so with that said, I just wanna-
It's like the cart before the horse.
Right, but I guess, I guess my point would be is, you understand, um, just with our operating budget, we could be at two percent, so none of our warrant articles are going to even be, could even-
Consider.
Correct.
I, I got you.
So-
I do understand that.
So it's, you know, it's anything that's raised through taxation and that's the-
To me, this is something that should have been done prior even to the tax. It should have been done years ago. If I don't work on it or push for it now, it'll never get pushed.
And I, and I'm not disagreeing with you, Mike.
Oh, no, I get it.
Because I'm just like, I mean, but I'm also, I'm concerned about the whole per diem per day. Six AM to six PM, we need to find that solution as well. So, you know, we got a lot of-
There's a lot of things that need to be made.
Yes, so-
Yes, I agree.
And, and maybe it's a matter of, you have to do this one step at a time, but I, and I don't necessarily disagree with you, but-
So that being said, my ideal was literally getting the chief onboard first. That way they each cheat whatever to make that decision on moving forward as far as the schedule.
So what, so, okay, so, and what I'm hearing, maybe you didn't, I apologize for not paying attention. So this is to, this would be a set, this fire chief position, you would no longer be filling this position?
Well, you'd have to put it out.
You'd have to put it out, absolutely would have to put it out. I agree with that.
You can just turn a per diem position into, I don't know. So you said that you were going to also ask for a warrant article? It is, for me, it's an either or. Are you putting it in your operating budget?
I want it inside my operating budget, yes.
But if we don't put it in the operating budget, then he's gonna turn around and say-
I will put it in as a warrant article.
But I, but again, I think that's something we have to take a look at because we have all, we could have maxed out and then it, you know, maxed out on the budget same.
And I will, I'm just saying, you're, we could vote on this in January. You're coming awfully close to when you'd need to be doing that. You know, the dates are really on top of each other.
As far as-
Though getting your warrant article in on time before we have to, I mean, we can take this right up till the last minute.
I can always pull a warrant article as well. So even if I put in a warrant article, it gets approved or disapproved, I can always pull that- I can always pull the warrant article as well. So, even if I put in a warrant article, it gets approved or disapproved, I can always pull that warrant.
No, I think it has to stay on there because I think we ran into that, we ran into that.
Yeah, you can't pull it.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to leave it.
So, so, as I said, I can, I can both scratch it completely.
Yes, right, right, right. Correct, right. You can't, you can't pull it before the town meeting, but you can get up at the town meeting and say, you know, I want to, you know, disregard. Yes, that, but, but once you've submitted it and we, especially if it's a petition.
I just feel it is something important for this town that in order for us to move forward.
So, your intent, okay, so let me just, maybe I understood. Your intent is, this is a new, this is a position that you would not be.
I would not be filling.
You would be not filling it. Okay, I guess that's the question I'm going to ask. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Well, I mean, how, so now you want to change your part-time or whatever you have called, use on part-time, on all of all of the year, but the status changes constantly. Going to lording to a part-time fire chief. You guys keep saying that you can't find anybody to come over here and work. How are we going to find a part-time fire chief? If the market is high, hard.
And so, that increase in the budget for that seventeen-five is so I can get comparable twenty-six thousand dollars a year, you're going to get somebody that wants to do it for that price. It all depends on how much money you want to throw.
And for the per diem, but the per diem rate never drop for EMS.
It's not as comparable as having an actual station to work in. Having the environment to work in is a hundred percent different. When you get to pick and choose the station you're going to. So, yes, you could throw money out there unless it's comparable.
But you could turn around and say that for the fire chief too, it's like.
And you don't know unless you're throwing it out there, is my point. You know what I mean? You have to try. If you don't try and you say, well, what if we don't get anybody?
So.
But you still have to try.
So, what changed from last Monday night? Right, but I mean, this couldn't have been an epiphany during the past week. You had to have known about it somehow.
I talked to Tim about it as well and I just wanted to bounce it off. I, this was, I've been in the works for a while. I didn't know whether I wanted to pull the trigger or not. Basically, if I wanted to put that in the operating budget or go with a warrant article on it, I decided to go with the come before everybody and put it in the operating budget for.
Which is a good place, but we're here for, so I understand why you changed your mind. It's okay.
So, and like I said, it's not like it's, I just woke up and said, oh, this is, this is what needed, needs to be in place for the county. This is in order for us to move forward. It's got to start somewhere and you can't, it's got to start from the top down as far as the department in order for anything to change.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, but I also know what we're, what we're working with.
What's the total part increase for for fire, if we did the nation's?
We.
Fifteen percent.
So, another thing, because you have Alvin Thomas going at six percent, just so you guys are aware, for your worry about two percent, but I will want at six percent.
Right.
And I get it. I do understand and I truly do understand the tax cap and where we're at as a town. We need to look at.
I guess it's just whatever, you have a question?
Yeah. Would you be willing to bump down the amount of shift pay? Just start compensate a little bit?
I can. There are two different budgets. That's the problem.
Well, you said the two different sets of budgets, but you're saying the EMS, the fire chief would be per diem, so that's, so you're going to.
Yes, but it would still fall under fire. That's where I see what you're saying.
I was just thinking of an easier sell. If you said, okay, I'm going to take some of those per diem responsibilities shifted to the fire chiefs, therefore I'm going to take some of the EMS shift pay.
And move.
And move it to, just, I think it might be an easier sell.
Because, because what's, right, because the thing of it is, is, because what I would say is, all right, Mike, you had seventy-two on the EMS shift pay, you had seventy-two budgeted for this year, you've only used thirty-two thousand. You still got thirty.
What were you offering?
Forty thousand.
Eighteen bucks an hour for the, I'm hurting, I think it was eighteen.
So, you've forty thousand right now that you haven't spent, so, and you're wanting to increase your fire chief by seventeen-five.
No, I think.
I think that's an easy, I think, I would think that's an easier sell, but I don't, you know, in. Just my, that's just my perception.
Well, another thing is if they do take it to the warrant article, the warrant article absence, next budget season, it wouldn't go under the budget. It would have to be either another warrant or you have to.
No, it would be part of, it's part of the operating budget. It's the overall, all the money that's raised. What your budget is, is based off. So, you could say, if you had two hundred thousand dollars in this line, interpretation, I may be wrong, say two hundred thousand dollars in, I'm just using straight, easy straight numbers, so, so twenty thousand dollars is the C N A warrant article. Well, I'm not doing it in shift. That gives me twenty thousand dollars that I could put in this line to say fire chief, twenty thousand dollars. So, because you get to use all the money in your budget based off the budget and based off of what's raised and signed.
So, the EMS, so the EMS on warrant article that we saw last year, was that through?
On the sign. So, that's, doesn't get counted at all. Nope. Look, those, so the things that were like a one-time typically is what we had done is, here at least, some stuff I've been here, are on the sign because they're one-time, you know. But if something that was going to continue, kind of like the highway, you know, the road paving, the breathing apparatus, the milfoil, stuff like that, that all usually comes out of taxation because it happens every year and we're trying to avoid the yo-yo factor, so.
Great, just so you're aware, you're looking at a percent increase for thousand if you went your way.
But again, Kathleen, we have to stay at the two percent.
No, I understand that. If you're taking the highway and everything else that went up six percent.
Right, no, I get it. I mean, we all come down and say, it's a penalty.
If we're going to go, if we're going to, if we're going to, like, focus on one part, then let's focus on all of them.
I don't disagree, but I'm just saying, one percent adds to one percent adds to one percent adds. Then you get above your, then you get above your two percent. So, we as a board have to come up with what we think is the best solution, give it to the budget committee and you guys.
I agree. As such, the budget committee have to go for it too. Absolutely. Right, that's the process. I completely know the process. Don't worry.
Any other questions, comments? You're good.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, chief.
I, I would make a quick comment though, because it doesn't, it doesn't pertain to any particular department. With the two percent tax cap, basically it comes off of the final number with warrant articles and assigned.
Yes.
From funding. So, basically, what we're doing here is if you have six percent in this department and you have one percent here and you have eight percent there. We now just have to delegate. We're going to go, there's departments that are going to go over. We've just got to look at that bottom number and see who's going to get what. And who, and what, and what's not going to get what.
Exactly. That's my twenty. I, I think it's fair to work at all the, all the way around three sixty.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, it's not a matter of, it'd be nice to apply two percent to every department and they call, and call it good, but that's just not realistic with a two percent tax cap in a small community. So, it's going to be a matter of, at the end of the day, looking at the total townside budget and then saying, okay, two percent, boom, boom. Now, we have to give an extra eighteen percent to the fire department, but the highway department's only going to get four, police is going to get three.
I'm just saying, look at it as a whole. I was just.
But I'm just saying, with it, with it being only two percent, you can't apply it to each individual, like you've just got to look at the bottom number.
I completely get it. My question is, if somebody goes to two percent, if they try to get rid of this two percent cap as a warrant article, as a petition, does it take it back until next year, right?
Twenty-four.
Does it have to be a petition or can we, SLUQ would put that in?
SLUQ would can actually hold a special meeting and actually do away with it for this budget if we wanted to.
Really?
Yeah. We would just have to hold a special meeting.
Special committee?
Yeah.
Has that been considered?
I researched it.
We haven't discussed it.
As a board, it hasn't been discussed.
Correct.
Or considered.
Right, no, I was going to say, no, we could not. Because I mean, I've been trying to find out, one of the things is the two percent, is, does it include your warrant articles, will it include anything related to taxation? So, I'm like, okay, that helps, you know, whatever, but, you know, overall, just trying to figure out where we're, how we're.
Individually, we've all been doing our own part and racking our brains going, how are we going to make this work?
And I wonder if towns like Milton who have the same tax cap, how they deal with it?
I've had this conversation with multiple, but it, part of it is, is your staffing levels. Town of Milton, we have seven full-time. You know, then you have other communities that have tax caps, but they have thirty-plus employees, full-time employees, and some of those vacancies, some of those positions go unfilled. So, now your salary lines for certain departments are lower, so therefore you can take that money and reallocate it here or reallocate it there. But when you've only got seven full-time employees, the chances of recouping any money from payroll lines is, is not going to happen because the town can't function without any one of those seven employees. So, then when you, when you dwindle down all the other lines to the point that you just have no, no room in a, in a year of inflation, it's, it's damn near impossible to, to work with two percent. I mean, your fuel lines alone are probably going to eat up your two percent.
Historically, tax caps have not worked very well for small towns.
Small towns. They work, they work.
You've got towns that have higher valuation, you know, they have a lot of employees, a lot of departments, there's just so much, so many more places in the budget to, to play with, to make up, so that you could stay within that tax cap. But, you know, in talking to V R A and talking to, you know, the Hampshire Municipal and they, they've all, you know, consistently said that tax caps do not work in small towns because we don't have the resources to shuffle. We already work at a very minimal level.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Oh, yeah, sure, no, we don't have.
Comments are, I know, but I don't really have a say in it, really don't very, but you guys are going to level fund that? Are you going to zero that and what the two percent, do you have a two percent, two percent cap? Do you know?
We haven't discussed, we haven't, we haven't discussed that and we'll, we'll get to that because we've got a couple of sections and we'll get to that then, Kathleen. So, I'm on the fourth page in the back. I think what I leave is at the emergency management. And.
I'll be happy to add, no increase.
So, yeah, so five hundred dollars, same level.
What, what I will say though is that we, we actually may expend funds out of there from talking with Stratford Regional Planning and what have you, with the emergency mitigation plan and, and what have you. It looks like most of that's going to be funded, but there are a couple of things that we may have to expend funds to them for to finalize all that, but we won't know until that goes through Homeland Security.
And we would want to make sure that that gets pushed through this year.
It, we won't, we won't know until twenty twenty-four.
Right, but they, could they, yeah, but.
We won't, because we won't even see it, we won't even see it until probably.
Right, but we should be able to push that back to the twenty twenty-three.
May, maybe, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah. So, the next line is the Stratford Dispatch. So, that's just a straight flat fifty-five hundred, that's staying the same, that doesn't change and. Oh, yeah, so the next page, the street, so down near the bottom, it's the street lighting, school diesel, school gas tonnage, hazardous waste and recycle. Are we good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're going to figure it out where we were.
So, the school, so I'll just say, school diesel, gasoline, that just comes from the school budget. So, they pass that number, we use that. The tonnage is, that's contract and I think we have one more year, one more year for that. Hazard waste is just based off of fire accumulation estimate of what we had budgeted and what we paid. Recycle, we don't, we just keep that as a dollar if we have to spend out of that, we do. Street lighting?
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
How many street lights do you have currently?
Ten.
Ten.
Roxanne knows where they are.
There's like four on Ridge Road, four on Ridge Road, one down at Lake Shore, one, two over.
Where are the four on Ridge Road?
Right, straight in front of Mark Marston's, sits, right down here in front of Kim Burrows.
And it's all.
Why do you have them?
Well, that's, well, so I think the reason why that is that, so it's the end of, the end of Ridge Road, right on the fifty throughout.
Yeah, I get that.
The one at Marston's is public for terms, so you're my guest. The one at Kim Dixon's, not sure. I've asked to have that one.
This is right away.
That one I've asked to have. Like to go right in front of, the, what's the pit, the pit.
Oh, because there'll be. There used to be one in Forts.
Well, there used to be one at the end of the Hudson Valley, but it isn't. And then the fourth one is here at the end of Ridge Road, then there's one out here at the highway, there's one down at the end of Governor's Road, there's one at Lake Shore.
Don't forget the one in front of the town hall.
Yeah, the one in front of the town hall and then the one at the end of Middleton Building Supply. Believe me, I've ridden the town three times to find the light and the last one I found was right in front of the. Pretty bad. So, I'm in the process, or I'm in the process of working with EverSource to get those changed, changed out to LEDs and this all came about because the one. Because.
It's going to take many, many years to get through the process.
Yeah, well, because you talk to your contact, then you have an account manager, that's who you need to talk to and he's the one that, then you have to talk to the, let me see, it's the, like, commercial division and everything. So, I think I've got the right contacts now because she calls me on a regular basis. I know, get for something more complicated. So, we are in the process of hopefully getting those situated, but I think Kathleen, exactly, we're all. Any questions for these lines?
Just an FYI, the streetlights are not eligible for the co-op.
Oh, right.
For the, they're not, they're not eligible to go under the third-party provider.
Oh, okay, yeah.
For reading.
So, we can't use AMIT for that?
We are EverSource.
Did you do this? Yeah, we did, we did do that. So, the next page, next to the last page, we have forty-four sixty, the milfoil treatment. This is a new line. Should have asked Kate and John when they were here.
I'm sorry, what?
The milfoil, milfoil treatment.
They're not asking for anything.
Forty-four sixty, the next to the last page, right after.
That's not really a new line. It showed up on here and it really shouldn't.
I was going to say they're not asking for anything.
That's the expense line that we pay, yeah, that shouldn't be on here. Did you cross that up?
All right. The next area, beach maintenance, patriotic and other culture. So, beach maintenance, we could have it in this book, we know it is, so, overall, it's going from forty-one hundred to forty-seven and the drivers that is quarter party down there. And it was nice of, oh, so Tracy, you want to ask the question? You want to say? Are we, are we, would we look to move this other cultural, the, the rect department?
Formality.
And Tony was, the rect department was nice enough not to do an increase at all, so we got two percent of that. And we did conservation. Now, last page, ten, that's just a dollar, we don't think only than that. So, now we get into the, like, the C R S. So, right now, we just stayed with road repaving, two hundred thousand, the C R for the fire department was twenty-five. The, was it my correct, twenty-five last year? It got upped by a tack, a resident to fifty. I asked to have it flipped back to twenty-five, I'll say that. The highway, highway vehicle is ten, the revaluation is twelve, four seventy-five. That was increasing because that's based off of the new contract. The natural man-made disaster, the state of a thousand, the C, S C V A, that state of five thousand, highway block grant, that's.
I don't have the number yet.
Okay. The public safety is ten thousand and the medical supplies here is ten thousand. So, those are just basically, right now, those are in there for taxation, Kathleen. If they were, if we don't, we can pull, we would pull them out if they're below the line for unassigned, we would choose to do differently.
Do we know how much is in the C R for the fire truck and the C R for the highway vehicles?
I'll talk ahead, I know.
Be in the new highway view. Okay.
They can tell you on, on highway, they're, they're good. They talked to Dan about it.
Well, that's my thought. As far as the department, they said they were within five years of needing new.
Engine.
Yeah.
Four-ten.
Over here, fire department replacement vehicles, so it was sixty-one and then we put what in last year?
Fifty.
Fifty, so it's at a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twelve? Fifty, so it's at one hundred and eleven, one hundred and twelve?
And then, uh...
What was the other one?
Highway, highway.
The highway vehicle?
Yeah.
That's... That one was at thirty-seven, thirty thousand seven, so forty thousand, let's say forty-one thousand.
Were they taking any money out of that though for this new truck? Encumbering any of that?
They used block grant on this, this new truck. We did spend any CRF, did we?
Did we do a warrant?
Did we?
Yeah, they, if they did, it was, if they did, they spent maybe minimal, but...
Yeah, it was minimal.
Yes, there was a warrant article that I think paid for the block, but then, but the bulk of it came out of block grant.
It was block grant and then the body was a warrant article, separate from the CRF.
Correct, yeah. So that's, that's those, and then the last two we have is employee self-security, employee Medicare. We just kept them the same as what we did for this year. We didn't change those.
Well, shouldn't they change?
They should change, they should change from the, the wages, what's that, what does, the wages that can help you, you know what I mean? But I would, I should do it, and I have the same.
So overall, if you were to look at everything just based off of what we have here, without updating any of the numbers that we have, we have to do math, what we had for, but we ended up with a three percent increase, which really overall total is not bad. But it's going to change, obviously, when we put in the three, three values numbers, that puts us... Well, based off, based on what you have in front, yes, if you look at that, if you look to the... We probably should be able to do, we should, we should, we should, we should, we should three percent based off of this year and last, well, twenty-twenty-three, and then we put twenty-twenty-four department head. Does anybody have any comments, questions?
Is it possible for either next week's budget meeting or when we start, I assume we're going to start going through this more as time goes on to have either the selectmen or Carol Rikim look on the N H M A and do a report and see how we are competitively towards salaries.
Have I come up on the latest wage survey? They collected data, like, we all gave them the wage data, but they haven't released the new survey yet, so if we, if we pulled it off, it would be a year old, you know, it would be going from twenty-two wages, which really wouldn't do us much good.
Because last year, when we looked at it, there was like act twenty-three, twenty-four.
I can look.
Okay. I can check the numbers. It should be helpful when looking because Carol, when you say that we're way over other towns.
Well, well, the thing is, in the last year, a lot of towns gave huge increases, like, we're talking like eight, ten, I mean, because of what happened to the economy. So when people are saying that, I think they're hearing what, like, oh, this town got a ten percent block of board grades, or this one got a seven percent. I think that's why people are thinking that we're so, but yeah, I'll try to get that forward.
And then is the police chief, is he full-time, full-time job?
Any other questions, comments? So next week is budget committee. We, the board of selectmen right now, I think we're, we won't be meeting again until eleven November twenty-seventh. I don't know if that's too far out to go over this budget, so maybe we can, you know, maybe meet before then, if that's what you thought. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So Tracy makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Bonnie seconded it. At seven-thirty-nine.